Hi. Mr. Johnson? Well, good morning. Curry County, Oregon Board of Commissioners. It is the last day of June 2021. We have a special meeting. It is 10 o'clock a.m. To my far left is Director of County Operations Brad Rickert. To my immediate left is Commissioner Christopher Pash. We have Commissioner Herzog on the telephone. Hope you're getting a well-deserved rest. And to my far right is County Council Anthony Pope and his right staff Jesuit. In the audience, we have Treasurer Barnes, we have Captain McDonald, we have Sheriff Ward, and we have Lieutenant Donnie Dotson from Brookings Police Department. Welcome all. So, uh, call order and pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You still hearing okay, Commissioner Herzog?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Board, approval or amendment of the agenda? Commissioner Pash?
I have an amendment to the agenda to add, um, to the action item dispatch system for Curry County first responders. Discussion and action item, we can make it.
Okay. Commissioner Herzog, you heard that okay?
Is that, is that radio?
Yes, sir.
Update, yeah.
So I also want to add, uh, discussion and, uh, action item to extend another week for possible, uh, further, uh, review, research into Codeon, uh, dispatch system. Uh, the Board gave me a week, and I've got some information, and I sent that to you yesterday. That's as quick as I could get it to everyone, by the way, including the sheriff, the captain. Uh, so I want to add that to either item number four, action item, or number five, other.
Well, can we just piggyback it onto the same? We can all talk about everything at once.
But you're going to want to vote, is that correct, on your, uh, agenda addition?
Yes, okay. So what, how about, can we make it, uh, four A, or four B and four C?
And, uh, my discussion would be four B, and yours would be four C.
You want to make me after you? Okay, that's fine.
Well, I'm hoping we don't have a vote today. If there's a, um, if there's a reason to, uh, slow this thing down a little bit and look at this. Did you look at the information I sent yesterday afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, uh, Commissioner Herzog, we've added four A, a vote-action discussion item on, uh, the, the, the earlier, as I understand, the earlier proposed dispatch system. And then I've added, uh, item four, uh, would be, excuse me.
Four B and C.
Four B and C, correct. And then I want to poll on the, uh, consent agenda, the entire budget matter, uh, with all the supplementals, and, uh, delay that for one week, Board. Director Rickert?
With today being the last day of the month, we've worked really hard to try to get back in compliance with laws. Those supplemental budgets do need to be done today. All the information is there. Gave, uh, everybody 24-hour notice to, to look it over. Um, if you have questions, we can talk about it now. But it, it really does need to be done today.
So, Council Pope, is that right that, uh, these sup, we approve supplemental budgets after the fact all the time? That's just the way it works in a small county government. So I'm, I'm trying to understand if we are absolutely obligated in some fashion to get this with less than 24 hours' notice done before today? So I need some help on that.
And to be honest with you, I don't know the details. I kind of refer to Brad about that. That's kind of his department. Um, but maybe if Brad, does this have to do, because if we're coming to the end of the, the budget year, that it needs to be done before then?
Yeah, we're trying to get everything closed out, and, and Sina is... Anyway, like I said, she's been working hard to get all this done so that we can get it done on time.
Well, uh, Commissioner Pash?
Well, I just know under Oregon laws and statutes, we are required to have our budget in place by the midnight of, uh, tonight, and, uh, all your supplemental budgets are supposed to be in place. And, uh, we are, um, we need to stay within the laws of the state of Oregon and be in compliance with those laws for several years. Before I got here, those laws were not being followed, and the county, um, suffered for it through the state. So, um, the, the supplemental budgets are pretty clear. Um, I don't see anything in, in them that would stop us from voting to approve them today and remain in compliance with the state law.
And I didn't have time for proper review. There was a lot of information there to process. Uh, you keep referencing the law, uh, and you mentioned past breakdowns. Uh, nobody's beaten down our door for those mistakes. There has to be an intent here to first do the best thing for the citizens. And without proper time or appropriate time to, uh, review this, I'm asking for one week, and I have several other questions that, uh, are important and related to where we are today. Uh, I just have an issue. Uh, I mean, we're talking about moving thousands of dollars around here. So, uh, here's where we are. Uh, we, again, I'm going to emphasize, we've done supplemental budgets, and we'll be doing many more, I assume, uh, for the next fiscal year. So, uh, I want to know how much overtime is being paid to rush this through? Uh, payroll mistake audits, I want to know where we are on that. I've not heard a word. Uh, any kind of upgrade there, or updates, excuse me? Uh, COVID relief funds, I still haven't added. Has the Board had a good report on that?
Yes.
Specific?
Yeah, I gave it, um, about a month ago.
Okay.
And as, as far as the supplemental goes, and these are really just straightforward, standard adjustments.
Yeah, I'll take your word.
It doesn't deal anything with the payroll audit. It, it has to deal with grants that, some, some of them have to do with grants that we've already received money in, that the Board has approved, and we're, and we're just required by law to do a supplemental on the budget. Um, again, they're just straightforward adjustments. If you have questions, um...
I didn't get enough time to read it, is the problem.
And it was 24-hour notice.
And we've been doing this to the last minute too long, and pushing people to get done by deadlines, and I'm not convinced that we're in any way compromising the law here. So, uh, if we rush through this today, when I'm only asking for an additional week so that we get our stuff together and give people in your department sufficient time, uh, and the Commissioners have good, supportive time for review, uh, I'm not going to support this today. And I have other questions, uh, that are related to the budget, and that's OpenGov to Casell, back to OpenGov, back to Casell, all the transitions. I want to know where we are on that. Uh, you don't have to answer me today. I want to give you that week.
Those are outside the supplementals, though.
Yeah, but it's important to understand where we are, and that has been the issue. And, uh, you know, I still don't know where we are with the amount of road fund reserves that we, we want to authorize, so... Uh, hang on. Commissioner Pash?
I, I just want to say, I, I, I understand your concerns with, with different issues in the county, but that has nothing to do with the year-end budget processes. Supplemental budgets are done all the time during the year. If someone has a need for something, they submit a supplemental budget for it. The Board looks at it and approves or denies it. Uh, this is year-end things to balance. We have to have a balanced budget. So we have to, by law, produce that by the end of today. Uh, these are supplemental budgets to increase or decrease budgeted areas. As we all know, budgets are constantly a moving item. There's nothing in stone on them. So, from an annual year-end budget process, this is just the final steps on this reporting process to the state that we are required to do by law.
So Commissioner Herzog, do you want to weigh in here, because I've said my piece?
It seems to me that we voted and have a, we passed a budget or voted to accept that budget as approved, and then any supplemental, um, you know, having not been there for, oh, three days, um, I don't know.
Can I ask you, please?
I think you may, you might be able to speak after me. I don't know who that is, but, um... So at this point, from what I've heard, is that, you know, supplemental budgets are, are looked at all throughout the year, and, and if we voted on it, we got an approved budget. Um, I'd like to look at, and I don't know if I could hear, you know, through the telephone, a description or, you know, information about this, this supplemental that would change my mind if we couldn't do it next week.
Did you drop your phone a minute ago there?
That's how I got to deal with business.
I wondered if you dropped your phone there a minute ago. So we have, uh, we have Chief Clerk, Accounting Clerk, Sina Crook, would like to address the Board. Please.
We have, um, I'm going to take my mask off, all right?
Certainly.
We've, most of these, um, pertain to money we have received and, and have planned expenditures for them, and we have resolutions in place that have accepted that money. We need to get that money reflected in our budget by year-end. Um, the only time I can think of us doing, um, a supplemental budget after year-end was last year, when we had, um, some payroll realignment that needed done because of, of late issues. But these are things that you've already passed resolutions on, accepting the money, and with so much stuff going on, we didn't get the supplementals put in earlier to realign the budget. Um, there's the one about, um, the snowcat, um, and we have to have a supplemental to take the money out of the contingency line and put it up into a working budget line, which is, um, the purchase of equipment. You have a resolution approving that already in place. Another one of these is for the, uh, COVID cares money that we're getting to reimburse us for our costs. You already have a resolution on that. And then another one is for the, the AR, what's it called?
ERP.
Yeah, for that money, and you have a resolution in place already, accepting that money. We just need to get this realigned into our current budget so we can get the year closed. We're so close to getting caught up, and, uh, we just want to start getting things done timely, like it's supposed to be, and move on, and we'll be so much farther ahead next year, is our plan. So, um... I just wanted to explain that you already have a resolution in place to approve these things, and we just need to get the budget realigned.
Director Rickert?
And I just want to reiterate, um, especially to Commissioner Herzog, it sounds like there might be some confusion. But the, these, uh, supplementals have nothing to do with next year's budget that, that was just approved. They're, they're, they deal with the current year's budget. And as Sina said, it's, it's all stuff, it's all money that has either been approved and has come in, or approved and been spent. We just have to, yeah, get, get the line items in the last year, or the current year's budget, correct. So, we've been working hard, trying to get back into compliance, get, um, getting things done on time, um, and, and it's really up to the Board, though, i- if we want to continue, um, not, not being in compliance. Um, that, that's the Board's choice. Um, and again, that, these, these funds have already been accepted or spent. It's, they're just balance sheet and, um, balance sheet adjustments.
Well, I think it's a little more complicated than that, but it has been, uh, kind of a pattern of, uh, the last minute, and, uh, I, I'm, I'm well aware of, uh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I apologize. Things have been a little bit last minute. We're still reeling from, um, getting back, things back together from OpenGov, and, but again, it's, it's last minute because a lot of, of Sina's effort is, is going into trying to get these done and get them on time. Um, anyway.
So Commissioner Herzog, I don't see anything to wait a week. I see no, uh, compromise or jeopardy to the county whatsoever. Uh, I, I, I assume you've not had a chance to read it. I haven't had a chance to read it and ask questions, and, uh, you know, I'll be very aggressive to learn all I can during that week. I feel very much rushed, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the citizens. I certainly could be wrong, but that's my, that's my position. Do you have something to say, Treasurer Barnes? Well, somebody's whispering back there. I'd appreciate if you would respect, and if you need to talk, request to come up to the microphone. So...
I got a, I got a, I got my hand raised.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If those three things are, you know, I love Sina's explanation, uh, and I was thinking, I was thinking this next budget, but I understand, so I, you know, if, if those are the three things in the supplemental budget, we've, um, we've already approved them, and they're, you know, I know the snowcat, um, and so, yeah, I would be, I would be in favor of, if there's, if those, if that's the three items for the supplemental budget for today, to get last, you know, last year's budget closed out and so they can audit or whatever, I'm good with that.
Okay, uh, so Council Pope, will we want to put that, there's, there's more than three, so do we want to put that in a one motion, or do we want to separate those out?
Well, I think right now, we're still talking about setting up the agenda, and if this is going to be pulled in.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I, I should have stopped this. I, I was kind of, I didn't think about that till right now. But, um, once we put it on the agenda, I think we can just do it in this one, um, just in one order here, one vote.
On consent, leave it on consent, yeah.
Yeah, you could leave it on consent.
Yeah, we veered off. That's, that's probably my fault. But, uh, good discussion. Mr. Crook, thank you. Very, uh, very well said, and, uh, good clarification there. Um, so, Mr. Pash, you recommend, uh, we're going to come back to you, Commissioner Herzog, in just a moment, but you recommended leaving that, Commissioner Pash, in the consent agenda?
Yes, we can vote on it right now, seeing we're in there. Can I just make a motion to, uh...
No, we got, we still have to approve the agenda, don't we? I think.
Yeah, I think we haven't voted for those other added items.
Okay, so we will come back to that fairly promptly here. Um, so Commissioner Herzog, anything else you want to add to that?
No, sir.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended, Board?
So moved as agenda, uh, as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question, please, Staff Jesuit.
Mr. Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, so we're going through the consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the, uh, supplemental budgets as discussed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question, please, Staff Jesuit.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Opposed.
Motion carried two to one.
Public health transfer memorandum of understanding, Council Pope?
All right, we just have a, an MOU that, between us and OHA, and the, the purpose of this MOU is just to lay out what exactly we're going to be transferring back to them. Um, as everybody's aware, they're taking over the local public health authority starting, um, tomorrow. And I attached a draft, a copy of the MOU, because I didn't have the final copy yet. Here's a, a final copy that I emailed out to you guys a bit earlier. Um, and like I said, it's basically just laying out exactly what equipment, um, was inventoried, and, and, you know, what we should do with it, or what's required to be returned.
I got a chance to, uh, if I may, Board, I got a chance to, just a moment, with, uh, former Public Administrator Ward yesterday. This inventory was, uh, really, really well done. And I don't think she had a lot of help either. So I just want to make that acknowledgement there. Um, any discussion, Board? Yep. Yes. Just the microphone, please.
David Barnes, I'm the County Treasurer. I read through this yesterday also, and I noticed there's, um, a clause in there about, um, giving this back to the state of Oregon. Um, it did not say, there was no method of return of this inventory to them. Shipping and transportation costs of getting this, all the equipment and stuff back to Salem would be rather significant. So I was wondering how that is to be addressed. It's, the, the MOU calls for the return of the inventory to, um, OHA, and I'm wondering who is bearing the cost of that return.
Mr. Pope, you want to discuss our conversation from the other day?
Yeah, we did. We did talk to them about that. And I believe in the updated version, um, the, the initial version said we had to deliver everything to them. It's now been changed to transferred. And right now, the understanding is they're going to come down and, and get it themselves. So, yeah, that was a big concern I had, too, because if we had to even just run a U-Haul and, you know, spend county time, it would still be thousands of dollars, so... Appreciate that concern, but, yeah, we did look into it.
So we were just a little nervous about that. Good job on that, and, uh, we still have to sort out what portion is going to go to Josephine County. Yeah. Okay. Looking for a motion, uh, on, uh, uh, action item four A?
I make a motion, we approve the mem, MOU for, uh, public health.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question. John Jesuit, please.
Mr. Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog? Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, uh, then we went to item four B, um, discussion on Curry Communications competitive bid. Uh, and I mentioned, uh, during our discussion on consent agenda matters, um, requesting another week. Uh, I see we have the sheriff and the captain here. I'm looking for the, uh, and Commissioner Herzog, I'm sorry you haven't had a chance to see this information, but if I understand correctly, forgive me, I'm going to try and grab the mouse here. Commissioner Herzog, last week, I asked for a week to just work with the Coos County people and see if I could bring something back to the Sheriff's Department that would potentially save a lot of money. Uh, we got a report, a very impressive bid on the dispatch system for $155,000. Now, that's not to suggest in any way that, uh, it would be an easy transfer or it'd be the, automatically the way to go, but we do have the potential to save some money. And so I want to go over some questions here that I sent, and just, just 20 minutes ago, got, uh, answers from Rick Felton, um, who is the bid submitter on this. And, and I'll just offer that competition is good. Uh, go ahead.
For, for the record, what company does he work for?
Uh, Codan Zetron. Codan just, uh, bought out Zetron. Uh, he gave references here from all over the United States. All different, all different, pretty impressive, but, you know what they all say, we're, none of us are as good as our resumes, so, um, here's a question I asked. Please address radio upgrades. This could be interrupted in several ways. Uh, radio infrastructure upgrades. The Zetron-Codan supports the public safety industry standards of P-25 at an affordable rate. I think he'll be more than willing to elaborate on some of these questions, and I'll submit this forward to, to the police departments. Subscribers, mobiles, portables, and base stations. If the county is staying on the same frequency, upgrades are required, but may just require reprogramming. My question again, a second question. It may take some time, but if Curry did accept the bid, what is the general time needed to get the Curry Communications new system up and running? 60 to 90 days is standard for Zetron dispatch consoles. Um, and I mentioned that they just bought out the Zetron Corporation. My third question, also, would everything be compatible with Coos County and the city of Brookings? He said yes. Coos County and the city of Brookings based, in parentheses here, based on online public information, more investigating required. Would be compatible through AFSI or DFSI? I don't have a clue. I, I think I forgot what that is. Anybody know what that means? That's here, okay. Well, we're getting to clarify and, uh, offer more information on that. Um, the fourth question, communicate the long-term maintenance plans and commitments, working with Day Wireless, et cetera. Zetron-Codan and Day Wireless share many customers. Zetron-Codan would encourage the county to explore a direct relationship with Day Wireless, and Zetron-Codan will continue to support and train Day Wireless. I'm not exactly sure what that means, who's going to be training who, but I think it was meant in a, in a very sincere way. Uh, his company could also prime the opportunity and offer Day Wireless's subprime work, but this would require more time to, and I think he means to analyze. Fifth question, references in addition to Curry County. And that's where he goes all over the state. Um, and then he just concludes, uh, his company appreciates the interest and looks forward to spending time with county leadership and customizing the best possible solution for Curry County. Um, and then he gives me his schedule. So, um, I'm going to bring up on the screen here the, the contract or the, the bid, and it is $155,000. I don't want to compare apples and oranges here, so I need, uh, just the, uh, the trust of the general concern here for ways that we might be able to save money. I'm not recommending this. I don't know enough about it. I got it to the sheriff as early as I possibly could, and Captain McDonald. So this is a new dispatch system. That was my concern, that he was just talking about radios when we originally had the discussion with him last Wednesday morning, or, excuse me, Thursday morning, early. So I entered the Board and got the, uh, got, got this to you by, you know, less than one week later, which would have been Tuesday afternoon, yesterday afternoon. Uh, but the bottom line here is, uh, is this, is this something that should give us at least cause for pause at $155,000? Commissioner Herzog, there is about, I don't know, is there six categories? No, about 10, that have separate bids that, that combine collectively to get to the, uh, the final bid of 155. And so I see Captain McDonald come up to the podium here, and, uh, anxious to hear... Did you get a chance to review this yesterday?
Yes, the price list. Yes, I did.
Okay. So please proceed.
Okay, so first of all, um, thank you for letting me speak today. But, um, all right, so here's the, here's my concern with this. Number one, this is a whole new company. Number two, the proposal that I brought to you from Motorola, from Day Wireless, is an engineered solution that's customly, it's custom-engineered to our dispatch center and how we do business, okay? Now, that's number one, okay? This is a list of parts that come in a box with no installation, no engineering. It's just a price list. This does not cover all of the equipment that the Motorola, quote, covers. The, um, it doesn't, it's, Zertron makes a dispatch center. I'll be the first one to admit it. There are some counties that use it. Um, we don't. We use a Motorola product. We use, right now, we use the Motorola Gold Elite. If you, if you wanted me to come in, all right, and number two, we did not put out a request for proposal, all right? I went to Day Wireless, who is our contracted radio equipment supplier, and they also maintain our system, they designed our system, they maintain our system. I went to them and said, "Look, I'm going to be asking for money sometime in the future, having no idea that the American Recovery Act money was coming. I need to know how much it will cost to up, upgrade, update our dispatch center, because that's the next major thing that needs to happen for public safety in this community." And it took them months to engineer a solution, and what I, what I brought to you, when that money became available, was that engineered solution. This, again, is a parts list that somebody threw together in less than a week, probably based upon what they could see and hear, all right? Whoever these people are have never been to our dispatch center. They don't know how our system works. So, we didn't put out a requ, all right? When you said, uh, this is a bid on a request for proposal, we did not put out a request for proposal. If we're going to put out a request for proposal, then we're going to have to hire somebody to come in and put one together that has all the technical expertise to put together that request for proposal so that we can then compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. This and this are not comparing apples to apples, okay? Yes, these parts are cheaper. Motorola, Motorola also makes a, a dispatch console system that's less expensive than the one that's in here. The one that is in here is their K2 core. Their K2 core is their, is the industry-leading standard, all right? It also, the, the K2 part means that it's a redundant system, all right? It has a redundant server, because these are all computer-based today. It has a redundant server, so if the first server goes down, the second server kicks in. I don't see that in here. We're a remote, isolated place that does not hire our own... a remote, isolated place that does not hire our own in-house, lives here, works for the county, radio tech or computer tech. It's all, it's all contracted out. All right? That's, but that's okay. We get industry experts by doing that. When I call, when I call Motorola, when I call Day Wireless, Day Wireless sends somebody over. If we have an emergency, they send somebody right now to fix it. These people, I don't know who their techs are. I know Zertron's made in Seattle. I don't know where their techs come from. All right? And I don't, we don't have a, we don't have a built-in relationship with them. I didn't bring to you the cheapest system that we could buy. That's not the proposal I brought to you. That's not what I asked Day Wireless to give me. I brought to you the best system that is compatible with how we do business, that is the same as what our dispatchers currently use. There's a technical term for it, it's Graphic User Interface. So I've been trained to look at this screen and know exactly how to operate this. All right? So that when I'm dispatching an ambulance, I go here. When I'm popping a door in the jail, I go over here. When I'm dispatching police, I click here. This is how I've been trained. When I answer 911, I click here. The system that I proposed, that I brought to you, is the exact replacement, that it's seamless when it comes to our dispatchers using it. Now, when you talk about, is it compatible with Coos County, is it compatible with, with Brookings Police Department? Number one, all radios is just, it's a matter of programming. The dispatch centers, the only, the only, the only way it's compatible or the same is if you use the same equipment. Brookings Police Department, their dispatch center uses the Motorola, the Motorola 7500E, which is what we're requesting here. If something happens to our dispatch center, or something happens to their dispatch center.
Got a little backup.
Right. So what happens is, right now, I have dispatchers at work and he has dispatchers at work. But if my dispatch center goes down and we can't operate it for some reason, in order to dispatch all of the agencies in the county at one time, we can do that from either station, from his station or mine, but it's gonna take more dispatchers to do it. So my dispatchers would have to go to Brookings and work out of the Brookings Police Department until we got fixed, or his dispatchers would have to come up here and work out of our dispatch center to help out, to cover the volume of calls that, that are received, that are split between the two centers. So whether it's the same thing as Coos County has, I don't care, because we don't work hand-in-hand with Coos County like that. Our radios themselves, yeah, we have their frequencies programmed into our radios, they have our frequencies programmed into their radios. When we get into their radio coverage area, we can key up and talk to them if we need to, and they can do the same thing here. That's radio interoperability. That's something that everybody's required to do. Like I said, I didn't bring to you, and I mean, I, I'm not gonna pick Zertron apart. I am not a 100% expert on what part, what works here, but I will tell you that this 155,000 does not cover everything that this proposal does. This proposal is engineered. If we're going to, if we're going to get into a bidding war, then we're gonna have to comply with bidding rules and regulations. This proposal is actually written up and submitted under a purchasing agreement that we are authorized to use and to purchase under, which then we don't have to do an RFP. All right? This one, I don't know, this is a price list. If we're gonna go for an RFP, we're now asked, we're now talking about months of work that, because Motorola is not going to say, here's all of our engineering, here's what you need to ask everybody, because this doesn't say everything, and that's very obvious when you look at this list.
Okay.
So what I'm, I, I get trying to save money. This isn't the cheapest thing Motorola can give us. This is the best thing for our community that has redundancies and backups built into it. This system controls two radio channels at a time. This one controls five at a time. We have five radio channels. This one also brings a RF consulate into the, into the program, which, right now, our link to Grizzly Mountain is a, is a wire line. They don't know that. They didn't, they didn't put that in here. All right? So we have that, and plus, this also brings a RF, which is a radio frequency backup to that, so we can still access Grizzly if the line goes down.
So here's, here's what I'm gonna recommend.
Well, let me, if I can finish, please.
Okay.
So what I'm, what I, what I suggest, and I mean, you guys have voted on this, we're gonna add months to this program. Every, every day that we delay this, once we do order it, puts us farther and farther and farther behind. If you're going to, if we're going to now start doing a bid process, then, like I said, you're gonna have to hire an engineer to come in and look at our system and put together a request for proposal. Otherwise, you're not going to do it in a legal manner, because you have to, if you're gonna put out a RFP, you have to spec out, this is exactly what we want, so that people are bidding on the exact same thing. These, these are not bidding on the same thing, and this one has no labor involved. There is, and it's not, even though it's, even though we call it the dispatch center and it's all radio, it's not all radio. Our dispatch center controls our jail also. And that is not reflected in these parts, nor is there any labor reflected in this. And
I've heard that. Fair enough.
And I've stated this on every time I've been in here. I mean, I, I've been in this business for a long time. Our dispatch center and, and the fact that it is built, I mean, it was built and it's, it was the Gold Elite. It was the, it was the cat's meow. It was the best thing on the market in its day. It's now a liability to this county. It is currently being operated with used spare parts. And I've said this every time. It's not, it's not if it's gonna break, it's when it's gonna break. And then when that happens, we're hanging out there. Every day that we, let's try and do something different, which, I mean, you've said that you're not a radio expert. I've been working with radio systems for my entire police career. All right? Am I an expert? No. Do I understand what needs to happen and, and what I'm asking for? Yes, I do. If I thought Zertron was the best fit for our county, if I thought that they could do what we needed and it would integrate seamlessly, I would've brought you a proposal from Zertron. I wouldn't have brought you a proposal from Motorola.
Yeah, but you didn't have that option before.
Oh, yes, I, I have every option I want.
Why wouldn't you want, why wouldn't you wanna take a week or even two, Captain, and determine if we are, if they can answer the questions you've had? Where's the labor?
Because
Should we do an RFP? Is it the best interest of the citizens to see where we're spending and not, and not have a rush on this and just have one option? I'm, I'm not, not in favor of that. If we can contact these people and say, and I agree, if, if the, wait now, if the, if the Day, excuse me, if the Motorola is proprietary, then, then we don't wanna give out that information. We wanna be fair, of course. But if this company, and they have a tremendous reputation in Coos County and around, around the nation, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we take a look at, I don't, I don't think we're talking months here. You just heard him say it would take 60 to 90 days. That's also what
That's months.
Well, okay, that's also the, the same timeframe that you represented with Motorola there.
No, Motorola, all right, okay. I, I'm, all right.
Isn't it gonna take a couple months to get this done?
I'm, here's what I'm asking. I'm asking, all right, I'm, I'm gonna go like this. You guys voted to accept this proposal. All right? This is what, I mean, I don't, I've come to you as, as, we're the ones that operate this system, and I've said, this is the system that we need. This is what we need to do our job to support our community. This is the system that, that we operate seamlessly with, with our partners. All right? I've come to you and said, this is what we need. And you're saying, you don't know anything. I'm gonna go talk to, that's, you're, I'm gonna go talk to these people over here. I brought this to you, you voted on it. You even voted yes, that you supported this, and yes, that we'll, that we will do this if you can't bring a proposal back in a week. This isn't a proposal. This is a, this is a packing list that doesn't fit the needs. I'm asking that you move forward with the solution and the equipment that we requested the county to provide.
So would you, would you participate in a, would you, you participate in even a two-week delay so I can get you additional information?
I've been, this, we've already been delayed.
So even if it could save, even if it could possibly save
You said a week, a week ago, and now a week again. All right? I've, I've looked at this. It's not the same system.
That's all the time we had. The commissioners gave me one week to see if we could save maybe 200 or 300,000. That's my responsibility.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we all support that and see, this, this came on board last minute as a possible option. Why wouldn't we take a sincere look at that and say, okay, no, this is nothing we're interested in or can, can support, or we need to give them another week to answer the questions that you legitimately just defined there?
Okay, so we're, all right, you don't, I mean, okay, you make the decisions on the money. I get that. You're the one that gets to approve that. You don't operate this system. All right? We would have to operate a system that we're not, it, it
Give them a chance to answer your questions. Maybe they can.
I don't have any questions of them. Okay? I have none.
You just mentioned, I just wrote down notes that you had, I think are very valid to, to why you think we need to, this is not comparing the same two programs. So let's see if we can get a chance to do that. We might, can you admit that if we all sat down and worked together, we might possibly save 200, 300,000?
I think that we'll come up with a cheaper system that does not fit our needs or take us into the future. I think that's what will happen.
I don't think Coos County would have a cheaper system. They seem to be very, very happy.
They're not Coos County.
Well, I understand that, but
And Coos County's system doesn't run their jail. Ours does. There's a whole bunch of difference. We're not Coos County.
Then you should communicate that to the citizens, and I think that would be a golden opportunity. I think you'd be very good at it.
I've, I've communicate, I'm communicating, you're, the citizens aren't the one that are making this decision. They're not the ones asking for a week. Everybody that has listened to our proposals has said they support this 100%. I, I'm
So what would we do if we didn't have the American Rescue Plan?
Anyways, I'm, before I get totally upset, I'm going to let the sheriff go, but like I said, I, I'm gonna just go over this again. The Motorola 7500E is the exact replacement for the system that we have. It will be seamless. It will, it will do everything that we've asked it to do, or everything that we've asked them to do for us. It's a complete integration of our system. And you know, I'll just throw this out. You, you, you said, you know, Klamath County and Douglas County use this? Yes, they do. I talked to Douglas County's dispatch center this morning. The Vesta system, which is 911, doesn't integrate into this.
I didn't say Douglas County.
Well, they do. They use Zetron.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. So, but I know that, you know, you bring Douglas County into all of this a lot. So, but anyways.
Well
They, they use this also. Their Vesta, the Vesta, which is the state-provided 911 system that we all use, Brookings uses, everybody uses, it doesn't integrate into this. That comes directly from who just switched to an old Zetron system to the new Zetron Max. They had Zetron, they stayed with Zetron. We have Motorola. I'm asking that we stay with Motorola. All right? Again, I'm telling you, I did not ask Motorola for their cheapest product. I asked Motorola for the best product, so that when we purchase something, it takes us into the future, and it takes us everywhere that we need to go.
Okay, Sheriff Ward.
So
Thank you, Captain.
Well, I don't know where to start, really, other than, this whole system was approved and voted on by the commissioners. And we propose, we made our proposal with Motorola three times here, every time it is approved, till the last time where you wanted another week. That system that they, that, like I said, has no information about what it costs to install it, who's going to install it. The training on the dispatch, our dispatch center would have, be incredibly high, expensive, because it's an old, new system, and it doesn't integrate basically with, with Brookings. We want the same system. We don't work for Coos County. We're not Coos County, we're Curry County. And you said last, last meeting, you don't understand this. And you were provided information from a lot of us that do understand it. And then you all of a sudden come up with a, say, you, you talked to Mike Robertson. Yeah, he's a great guy. I like him too. And I did talk to him after that meeting. He says, I never told Court Boyce we could save him a lot of money on the dispatch center. We talked about
No, he didn't, and I didn't promote anything like that, Sheriff.
Yeah, you did. You said about this whole system.
I said, maybe we could save some money.
Let me finish.
I wanted a good review. You're saying something that's not accurate.
This is my time to talk, okay? You keep interrupting me all the time, and I don't appreciate it.
You said something that's not accurate, sir.
It is accurate.
No, I didn't say
Because I did talk, I, I went back and watched the video several times of that meeting.
And I said that, he said we, he could save us money. Maybe.
He said he could save money on the Hilltop radios. Has nothing to do with the dispatch console system. Okay? What, what Motorola has proposed is an engineered study that they can come in and replace our equipment, and our dispatch can see the exact same thing that they were working on. Not a new system where they all have to be retrained. I don't even know if that stuff will integrate with our, our jail pops and whatever. We don't know anything about this system. Okay? But the thing is, we know what Motorola gives, and we knows what, what we, what we get with Motorola. Mr. Herzog, Commissioner Herzog, I hope you're understanding this, that this is the best way to go. If you talk about funding, we had discussed updating our system for a long time. We were trying to figure out how we're gonna get the money for it. We all knew it's gonna have to come from the road fund reserve, because when it breaks, it, it has to be done now. And the only money that we can hand is road fund reserves. Now, all of a sudden, you got this A R P money, and it comes to the county, it doesn't cost the county any money to put this system in, our, the Motorola system. It's gonna, and I did talk to Motorola yesterday. They said they were expecting this to be passed, which it was last week, and I said, you're gonna have to hold on. Well, we had you in a July schedule to get started on this. Motorola is very busy. You even said Motorola is on their way out. They're the leading radio company, equipment manufacturer in the world. There's no question about that. So they know what they're doing. This equipment that we're asking for is to upgrade, it gives us, puts us into, way into the future. I have Donnie Dotson here. I've asked him to show, come in and explain if you have any questions about the system that they're operating on, the one that we're trying to go to. So, Donnie, you wanna say something?
Answer any question you might have. Excuse me.
Welcome. You gotta adjust the microphones there.
You asked earlier, Commissioner Boyce, what, what would we do if we didn't have the American Rescue Plan? We were in that position. We didn't have the American Rescue Plan three years ago, when we went through exactly what you're going through now. We had saved for years, knowing that this was coming, that we were also Gold Elite, and Motorola notified us that Gold Elite was no longer gonna be supported. I think it was in 2018, that it was declared end of life. So we saved, and we saved, and we saved. And anybody that knows me and my habits knows that I'm always looking for a way to save a buck, whether, on, on equipment where we can, right? But they'll also tell you, there are certain places where I won't scrimp, I won't sacrifice. And these radios, they're not only, or consoles in this case, but the whole radio system. This is the lifeline for our people, our responders, police, fire, medical. But it's also the lifeline for the citizens, right? That's how the responders get the information that they need, is over these systems. So I take, I take very seriously the reliability of the system, and then of our service. Our service provider is Day Wireless. We have really no other option, but that's okay, because they're great. We, I have a ton of respect for them and how they operate. They're a Motorola, what are they called? Premium Partner, I think it is. Basically, they're like this with Motorola. Their service techs, when they come out, or oftentimes, they don't even have to come out. They can coach us through over the phone, because they are so knowledgeable about this MCC 7500 system, because that's the vast majority of their customers use this system. So if something goes wrong, or if, if we decide we wanna make a little tweak to the system, a lot of times, these guys just have it. They just know the system so well, that they don't have to look it up in the manual or call somebody, you know, back east or, or wherever. They're already experts with these systems. So that was part of our, of our, you know, calculation. We looked at a, at a competitor, they were called Avtech, and we were in the same position. Man, we could save a few bucks here by going to something completely different. It looks totally different. It behaves totally different. It looks totally different, it behaves totally different. Avtech was a company that, um, kind of made their name in air traffic control, uh, consoles. They started to break into the public safety market. Day Wireless trained up a couple techs to work on them, because I believe it was Arcata, maybe Humboldt State, maybe Eureka. One or two agencies down there caught on to this, that they could save a few bucks with going with this Avtech company. So Motorola, or Day Wireless, rather, uh, because I, I asked, like, how could we save a few dollars? Motorola is expensive, but it's great. Is there a way? And Day Wireless Service Manager, whom I respect, uh, says, well, you could look at this other company. So we did. At the end of the day, it wasn't worth it. Uh, we, and we, with, with genuine interest in the system, it just didn't pencil out. It just didn't make sense. And long and short of it is, since then, Motorola has bought Avtech. So that's not really an option anymore. Motorola, about the same time, bought Airbus. Airbus is the company that makes our nine-one-one system, or Motorola is now, Vesta. So the Vesta system is owned by Motorola. Our MCC seventy-five-hundred, of course, is Motorola, and they, they just work perfectly together. Part of my calculation back in twenty-eighteen when we did this was what direction is the sheriff's office going to go? When I was exploring this Avtech possibility, I went, well, and at the, I called up here. Is there a chance that when you guys replace your Gold Elite, that it's going to be Avtech? Because if not, strike against Avtech. And the answer was no, we never even heard of it, you know? So it's, what, what Captain McDonald was talking about, the seamless transition, there can't be enough said for that, in not having to retrain our people. We, when we switched from Gold Elite to MCC, it was seamless, truly seamless. It looks identical. So, um, anyway, happy to answer any questions you guys might have about how it went.
Well, you said something very interesting there. You said, City of Brookings saved money. Curry County is not famous for saving money under almost any circumstances, so, uh, and that's going to come back to bite us someday, and that's why I'm sticking my neck out here in a pretty intense conversation. You know, Curry County has a tremendous terrain, and so we had to put eight hundred thousand dollars into those five or six towers, which I fully supported, and I also supported this, okay? When I see an opportunity, though, that might through a competitive, and by the way, Captain McDonald, I did misspeak, this, this is not a bid, and I've referenced somewhat similar to that. But in the interest of bringing this county together, it's tremendous to see you here today. That's part of the process to figure this all out and save every dime we can, that I think you are quite, uh, you know, that is your reputation, which I really appreciate. But again, the county's not, uh, does not have that reputation, and it's, uh, it's crushing with what we're faced with in the, in the future, especially when it comes to law enforcement. So, Commissioner Herzog, I, do you have any questions? Oh, you did, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to say, um, I'm, I'm very familiar with that, was very familiar with Avtech as a pilot, because that's, that's, they, that's who they, uh, all the radios and our airplanes were, were through. And they were brought, bought out a few years ago. I kind of did a quick study on, um, some of the different companies, um, and I, I just stumbled across this while I was looking at companies, um, that could have dispatch boards. I were, I stumbled across a fifty-two-page City of Independence, Kansas, report request for commission action dated August twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty. And the police department staff recommends in this action, uh, the commission approve expending nine-one-one funds to replace their Z-tron radio system with a Telx system, uh, which is another competitor. None of the expenses will be funded. I'm going to skip down on this to the background of this and, and the reason they would like to see the change, and I would make this available to anyone in this room if they want it. Their current system of Z-tron does not create, and exactly what Captain McDonald talked about, true redundancy between the, uh, the systems for public safety, between the Independence Police Department and their nine-one-one system. This other system creates true redundancy in, in within the, the radio system, and then also, there were three workstations at each station as a standalone purpose for redundancy, and they needed that to pass their MGSO, whatever that is. But anyway, a lot of the reasons that they didn't want the, uh, the Z-tron system is it was, it didn't have redundancy to meet the needs of their community and public safety. And I'd just like to say one more comment on this. This was already voted on by the board to approve, and where do we draw the line? We are coming now into fire season, and again, everyone thinks this is a nine-one-one board for the police department. That's a great part of it, but it's for every first responder in this county. Fire departments, um, fire rescue, there's a, there was a whole list that I read off. There was nine or ten different agencies that use this system for public support, public, uh, help, and first responders to, uh, to all of our emergency situations in the county. So I would urge this vote, the board, to move forward with this.
So I, thank you. I have one more comment. I'm going to oppose making a decision today. Yes, I voted to support this. I'm really sad that we, we drug Mike Robison into this, in this sense that, uh, he didn't call me up, because he's a good guy. He called me up and said, we're going to put four hundred thousand into Curry County radio system, and there might, he emphasized, there might be a way to save Curry County some money. I don't know. Here's what we're doing. What do you think? That's when I come to the board immediately, because he called me on a Tuesday, and we had a board meeting that day. So, um, you know, I, I'm, uh, when, when I can't have an opportunity to go to this company, by the way, Z-tron doesn't do, well, with Kodan, the larger company, collectively, I presume that they do, and are able to compete vigorously with anyone else in the industry. But that remains to be seen. Those are questions that have to be answered. Can we save the taxpayers some money and still get it done in plenty of time, or equal time, to what Motorola is, is able and willing, capable of doing? So, uh, I, I just want to emphasize, Mike Robson called with the, uh, the director of Coos-Curry Forest Protective Association. He called with the right spirit, and, um, he's got a Curry County background, to say the least, and, um, I, I'm just really sorry if, in any way, uh, he was, uh, his motives were anything but recommended beyond, uh, just a way he might be able to help and do his job.
Again, he's talking about the Hilltop radios had nothing to do with the dispatch console center that we provide, or through our nine-one-one system.
And he clarified that in the beginning, Sheriff.
And I'm going to, I'll say it again, that when I talked to Motorola yesterday, they said they were expecting this to be passed, because it was passed, so they can get us into July startup. And when they said, if it doesn't get signed, we move out of that queue down the road somewhere. And it's just, it's, it's baffling to me that we're sitting here having to tell you this is what it is. You know, several of us made, at least three different times, proposals, showed you the proposals on this, you know, and, and we have a lot of knowledge. We know what we're talking about. But you get one phone call from Mike, and you say, he's a good guy, we, I trust him, and I think we can save a lot of money. He's talking about the radio system, not our dispatch console. And now we're faced with this other thing. It's not even a proposal, it's not, it's just a quote on, on some pieces and parts that could come here without. And again, there would have to be an RFP set up on it, and we're, we're looking at months down the road, and I'm not talking about two or three months, I'm talking a year before we can get this system in, if we have to go through this. We don't want this system. That's not what we asked for. We asked for what we have, an upgrade to the system that we have, that we know that's tru, true, uh, true and tried, so.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Herzog, please.
I'm not interrupting John, am I? Am I?
No, we're ready for a motion, though.
Okay, um, if I could just make a comment, you know, nobody wants to save money as, any more than I do, and I know we all do. And I do feel like the departments should be able to pick their, uh, upgrades. I think, you know, the assessor got to do an upgrade here a while back, and they, they know it's what's worked best for them, and we have, uh, this money that has come to us, and we're going to do it in two different, separate, um, payments, I understand, and Motorola's even come down. And so it is, it's a huge chunk of money, but when you start talking about, I think John and, and, um, Phil have both said that this is, this is, this system we have is like twenty years old. And when you break down, if this new system lasts that, we're only talking thirty, forty thousand a year for a system that they're, that is top-notch, and, um, I, I just think the department should be able to pick their, you know, what they use. And, and I think that the differential for me is, this runs the jail, the nine-one-one, um, Donnie's there backing it up. I, I, you know, I've known Donnie for, since he was a knee-high to a small duck, uh, trust him and respect him. And, uh, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve this and get this moved on, and, um, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Pretty persuasive, Commissioner. Any further discussion? I'm going to, I'm going to change and support this, because for a variety of reasons, uh, probably five key people in this room alone. So I will support this. Any other discussion, Board?
Just to clarify on what exactly the motion is. Is it that we're going to just basically go along with what the vote was last week and let the, the contract be signed and move forward?
I think we just need the support that it's already been voted on, and we're not going to, uh, we're not going to authorize any further delays in that decision.
Okay, that's.
Does that, does that help? Commissioner Herzog?
Yeah, that, that's my motion. No, no more delays.
Okay, Commissioner Pash?
I'll second.
Call for the question, please, Staff Jesuit.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
Uh, before we start here, the contract, you guys already have a copy of that. Motorola would like to have that signed today, and so we can get that, um, moving.
You just got preempted.
That's what I was going to ask. I was going to say I provided the, the contract that has all the signature lines and the, and here's the authorization or the, um, um, the, the, uh, process that we can use to do this, that's all outlined in that contract, and I would ask that it be signed today so that we can provide that, so we can.
So Commissioner Herzog, can we have your verbal authority, not to sign for you, but just to make sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Pash?
No, I was just going to make sure from county council that we could, with two signatures, of course, go forward, and when Commissioner Herzog returns from vacation, he can sign it.
Yeah, the two signatures represent the.
Can we get that sent, uh, somehow, John assigned for him, so we?
Council Pope?
Yeah, I was just saying, that's fine, as long as there's two signatures, that's the, the quorum, and that's all we need.
Director Rickert?
Um, and, and as far as the contract goes, if I'm under, and if I understand everything right, Sheriff, you have the authority to sign that, correct?
The commissioners are signing the, the order.
There is a signature line there, yes.
The contract.
But there again, I want to make people aware that it's just not for the sheriff's office, it's for the entire county.
Understood.
And what you have done today is the best that you guys could possibly do for our county to get this going. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Second page, Council.
Thank you.
I'll just read through it.
Hold on, Mac. Brookings PD.
Commissioner, if I can throw in there, um, Mr. Robertson, Robertson, I, I spoke with him on a number of occasions about what they're doing here, and, and for what they're doing for Coos-Curry, it actually is a good thing for them. I mean, for the forest protection, and there may be some time in the future that we can look at some of that stuff, but for this, that just, it just doesn't apply. So, but thank you for your decisions today.
Thank you, Captain. I, I've concentrated every word you had there. So, Board, anything else?
If I could, one more thing.
Commissioner Pash?
Um, could you copy that signature page and send that back to us, so we have a copy of the signature page? Thank you.
You're not done yet?
Does this need a border number on it?
JJ will get all of that.
So, Board, do we have anything else, um, before we go into executive session? So, uh.
I don't think we added that to the original agenda, so we just need a quick vote to go into, was it on the agenda already?
No.
We just need a vote that we were.
Going into executive session now?
Yeah, we have, uh, I, I sent that to you, and it was item one, three, I think. And that is, uh, that is to clarify, uh, the work we did at the last executive session on Article twenty-eight and related, the personnel rules.
I, I don't know that, if that's an executive session thing, I think we need to do that in open session, Council.
I think the reason we should do it in executives, because it's what we talked about in the last executive session, so we can hold a privilege.
And stay with your new feet, right? Commissioner Herzog, you're away from cell coverage, is that correct? So if we had you come back at one, that probably wouldn't be very convenient for you?
I've got something else going on.
No, it wouldn't, but, um, why, why one?
Because I got a real important meeting, I've already missed an hour, so I try and accommodate, accommodate everyone's schedule here, so.
Can we just bring this back for our next Wednesday's meeting?
That might be, that might be a good idea. Do you, what do you think, Council Pope?
I think so.
Let me think just thirty seconds on that, um. You said you had something this afternoon, right?
I really can't, I can't imagine anything more important than County, uh, Curry County business, so, um.
Well, um, that's why I took thirty seconds. And you just cut my, cut my fifteen seconds off there. Okay, we'll go into executive session, the governing body will now meet in, in, yes?
We just need a vote, we have to have two, uh, two commissioners agree to that before we can go into it, because it wasn't on the original agenda.
So did you disagree? Commissioner Herzog?
With the executive session?
Yeah, we need two of the three commissioners to agree, and I think Commissioner Pash is in agreement, because he has something this afternoon.
Well, I'm, I'm either going to executive session now, or put this off until next week.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Next, next week, or now?